Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 18th regular board meeting for Chico Unified School District. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. We have an amazing full house. Thank you all so much for being here. I'm really excited to see what the students have for us today. But before we do that, we do have a couple of new members who were recently elected. So we will, in a moment, do the flag salute. Then we will invite a judge to come forward and swear in our new members so they can officially begin their term in office. And then we will move on to the amazing student presentation that we are very excited about. So will you all please join me in the flag salute?
And Tom, before we do the flag salute, would you save the flag? It kind of took a dive over there.
And with that, I will invite Judge Lucena to the stage, please.
Hello, and hello to all of you. My name is Kristin Lucena. I'm a judge here with the Butte County Superior Court. And I am honored to be afforded the opportunity to conduct the swearing-in ceremony for the new Chico Unified School District trustees Gail Olson and Tisha Hayes. Both Ms. Olson and Ms. Hayes are retired teachers. And this reminds me of another former teacher who was a longstanding Chico Unified School District trustee from 1977 to 1990, Ms. Mary Ann Haux. Mrs. Haux went on to serve her community further as a Chico City Council member and then on the Butte County Board of Supervisors. As Chico Unified School District trustee, Mrs. Haux had the habit of cutting out from the Chico Enterprise Record articles about students in the district. And I was the recipient of several of these kind gestures that she would present through the mail as I was a student through Jay Partridge and Shasta Elementary School and Bidwell Junior High School and then at Pleasant Valley High School. And I know I wasn't the only one that received these kind gestures and notes of inspiration and encouragement from an important woman. And she, her targeted attention to students of the Chico Unified School District mattered. And I hope that our new trustees will find a way of their own to inspire individual students to achieve their best work in the classroom, on the sports pitch, and in the arts. And I wish both of them a great deal of success. And I did want to just introduce myself to the students that are here and welcome you. An oath is an important transition into a new role. And this is a very special oath that is said by all elected officials. And we're going to have our new trustees come up and swear their oath at this time. So let's go ahead and start with Tisha Hayes. Thank you. So if you could, please repeat after me. I, Tisha Hayes, do solemnly swear or affirm...
I, Tisha Hayes, do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And the State of California...
And the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties upon which I'm about to enter...
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and now would Ms. Gail Olson please join us? All right, please raise your hand. I, Gail Olson...
I, Gail Olson...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support and defend the Constitution...
That I will support and defend the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And that I take this obligation freely...
And that I take this obligation freely...
And without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
And without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter...
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please join me in a round of applause for Judge Lucena. Thank you so much for being here. It's really an honor to have you here. At this time, I'm going to present a certificate to our new board members. And I'm going to start with Ms. Hayes and allow you the opportunity to say a few words and introduce those people that are with you.
I'm really excited to be entering this role. I've been a teacher for, since 1990. And so students are at my very heart. I've been a ninth grade teacher, English and reading. And I really do feel that students are at the focus of what we should be doing. I hope that all of you would reach out to the board if you have any questions or concerns. And I want to thank the California Teachers Association, NCUTA, for their support and my family's support. I have my daughter, my granddaughter, who is at Rosedale, and my husband here tonight. And both my daughter and granddaughter campaigned for both myself and for Gail. So very proud.
And now I'd like to invite Gail Olson.
Is it on? Okay, thank you. Well, first off, I just want to say I'm super excited to be here and I'm ready for this next adventure. There were so many people that helped me throughout my campaigning that I couldn't possibly mention them all. But I do have a few that I really need to give a shout out. Matt Taylor, he was a student of mine. He graduated in 10 years ago, right? 10 years ago, he found out that I was running. He came out canvassing with me. Did a great job speaking to the people, and thank you for your support. I also had two other students from Pleasant Valley that were on my caseload for three years. They came out and campaigned with me and did an excellent job canvassing door-to-door. Obviously, I have to give a shout out to my campaign manager, Diane, who's also my wife. Her mental and physical efforts were, she made me tired. Yeah, and then Ryan, who was my treasure. I said, "Ryan, they say it's a piece of cake. This'll be easy." He's like, "Okay." It was not easy, so thank you very much. And then finally, I know on YouTube land, I have my daughter Courtney, who's in Fresno, and my son Chad, who's in this little town called Mop in Oregon. And I know that they're watching, and I want to say hi. Thank you.
Don't go that way.
Time to take your chair.
You sit up here now. And of course, a big welcome to both of you from the existing board members. We've had the opportunity to get to know these two and work with them a little bit already. It's been an absolute pleasure. Looking forward to it. And now, back over to Kelly, please.
Well, we have a real treat this evening. Not one school, but two. So we are going to start with Chico Junior High School. And Mr. John Gunderson, the principal, is going to come up and tell us what we're going to see.
Thank you guys. Thank you so much for having myself and my school here today. Before we get started, I just want to thank you all for what you do. Making decisions for a school district and doing what's best for kids is not always easy. And I just really appreciate all the work that you guys do. I also want to thank you guys. Okay, we can't do what we do without schools, without the support and everything we get from you guys. So thank you so much. You guys are an amazing team. We are grateful. We are aware at our school that you guys help us get going and keep the thing going. So we really appreciate you. And I am one of the luckiest principals in the world because I work with not only the most amazing staff and just some amazing, like talented people that connect with kids, but I also work with some amazing students. And one of the showcase things that we have tonight is our drama department. It's run by Ms. Sonia Huss. The amount of work that this woman puts in is staggering. It's impressive. It's inspiring as her supervisor to see somebody work that hard. And then the product that she produces is spectacular. And one of the coolest things that I've noticed is in her classroom, in her drama class, you can really watch kids who don't really say much and they're not super social, but they start to come out of their shell. And after they have her as a teacher and after they go through her program, they really start to blossom and become these amazing individuals as they get ready for high school. And it's all because of the work of her and also the awesome kids that we get to work with. So I will now introduce her and them. So this is Ms. Sonia Huss and some of our stars from the drama department.
Wow, hi, I'm Sonia Huss. It's very nice to be here. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to describe Chico Unified School District.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to describe Chico Junior Drama. I have the privilege of being the teacher that's pulling that together. I brought, I know you don't want to hear me talk, I know you want to hear the kids. So I have three wonderful students with me tonight. I've got Aurabella, Mandela, and Abby. And they would like to describe to you a little bit about what we do in drama.
Hi, um, sorry, hi. So some of the.
I don't know the tech. Is it the top button? The arrow. Okay. Hold that. Other arrow, top arrow.
Okay.
Okay.
So some of the goals that we've had in our drama department ever since 2017. Sorry, we've had several goals in our drama department since 2017. The first of them being to develop confidence. This confidence really helps us onstage, but it also helps us a lot in real life. It helps us gain like a lot more courage. The next skill, or the next goal that we're working towards is improving our communication skills. We're taught new ways to say things and communicate by memorizing lines. Usually the lines that we have to say are more mature than like what a kid would say. Our next goal is to improve teamwork. Doing a show with 35 to 40 other people helps you realize that you have to work as a team. And if you don't, then like the show can't get done. Our next goal is to help improve your creativity. When you're creating a character, you have to think about like how would they act? What would they say? And you have to improve your creativity by doing that. You have to be creative with it. The next goal is to improve your critical thinking. You have to think, what would this character do? What is happening that is leading to this event? All of that, and you have to use your critical thinking when dealing with that. So, yeah. Our last goal is to learn through the play, you know? Have fun with it. And having fun in our plays is pretty much how you learn. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
In fall, we did two shows. We did the mustache melodrama in Snow White. Snow White was a retell by all the dwarfs. I was Snow White in that show. The mustache melodrama was a true melodrama with booming and throwing popcorn. This is a picture from Snow White. This scene was from Shakespeare. This, here is the whole cast for Snow White. We love hearing the audience cheer. We usually get about 175 people at our shows. This is the mustache melodrama. There was a lot of action in that one. This is the whole cast of the melodrama. They are so proud of their accomplishments.
This year for our musical, in the spring, we are doing Mean Girls Junior. Don't worry, it is middle school appropriate.
It is.
We are going to do this in collaboration with the Chico Junior Choir. Musicals are arguably more difficult because we have to learn how to sing and how to dance and also how to act. And then we also have to make costumes and also sets and props. And we have to figure out who's doing what onstage and who's doing the sounds and lights and all that good stuff. We haven't done our spring show yet, obviously. So I won't show it to you, but here is a clip from our musical last year, Madagascar Junior.
Well, they look.
Catching bees under the skies of blue.
There's juicy berries.
Yeah, I need steak. Oh, come on, man, you'll love it here, can't you see?
It's paradise, paradise.
I'm a strong cookie.
Look at me so wild and free.
I got it.
It's my dream come alive.
I want to survive.
Living in paradise.
So, thank you for having us. As you can see in that, we use real microphones. So we have 25, 24 microphones for the students. And so they have to learn how to do tech and run the tech with that. And then we, we bring sets on and we, we have lights. So we try to do everything we can. My students don't drive, so we try, we have to keep everything on our stage there on campus and it works really well for us. So thank you for this time and opportunity, it means a lot. Thank you. Thank you, Chico Junior, and I hope Citrus is watching because a lot of our Citrus kids go to Chico Junior. So you could be recruiting here tonight. So with that, we are going to get to Citrus. So I would like Assistant Principal Gloria Godinez to come up and talk to us a little bit about the bike program and what we're going to see.
Good evening and welcome, sorry. I'm Gloria Godinez, I'm the Assistant Principal at Citrus Elementary. I am excited to share a very special program at Citrus that our students and Mr. Wyon's fifth grade class participate in each year. The Citrus Bike Program has been in existence since 2011 and Mr. Wyon has kept it going strong. Our bike program has donated over 100 bikes to our community. I would like to invite Nathaniel Wyon to take over and share the outstanding work that he and his students do each year.
Wow, that was really encouraging, thanks, everybody. If we could awkward transition my students up and then bikes over, if that's okay? Okay. Can you guys grab the bikes, please, and then bring them over here? Sorry if you're watching this online. I know that this is like a longer staff meeting now. Okay. Bikes are a large part of what we do in our class and it's a large part of our class culture. We use bikes for all of our field trips. And actually, seven of us learned how to ride bikes this year. So a lot of them after school with me and then a few at home. We travel for our field trips on bikes. It eliminates the need to get a bunch of parent drivers, which can be tricky. And then also it eliminates the need to fundraise for busing. So, and we, we go as far as up to diversion dam, which is also Bear Hole. And then we usually go out to the Sacramento River, to the reserve over there. So we do a lot of things with bikes, but today we're going to talk about our bike project. Yep, that's me.
Me and my class, over the past few weeks, have been refurbishing old and used bikes and making them like new to give to children who wouldn't normally find a bicycle under their Christmas tree. As we move on, I am going to talk about what the bike journal is mostly about. In our bike journal, we graph out our bike parts and their names to know what we're working on. We also drew and labeled our most important tools or the tools we're going to be using. That is what the bike journal is mostly about. I think the bike journal was probably one of the best things we did during this bike project. For an example, me and my group loved graphing. It was fun to find and connect the dots. We also loved writing down and getting the donations. It was very exciting to see who donated. The money math was also pretty fun to see how much we got in total.
Hello, I'll be talking about the letters we wrote in class. We wrote letters to businesses to see if they would want to help us. We learned how to write letters and how to address envelopes. I'm going to share a few letters that we got written back to us. Hey Eden, I appreciate your handwritten note. What an amazing project you are working on. We are happy to support your project and we wish you the best of luck reaching your goals. Merry Christmas. Dear Diana, I am very impressed with you and your class's bike refurbishing project. What a wonderful thing it is to treat others the way you want to be treated. If, if you or your classmates didn't have any presents under your Christmas tree, that would be a sad day. You and your class are going to bring so much happiness some, to some children who, here in Chico, and make their Christmas special. Thank you for the privilege of donating to such a worth cause. Sincerely, Brad Jackson.
Hello, my name is Harrison. I'm going to talk about how my group did with the disassembly. When we got to take apart the bikes, I felt strong because I haven't, haven't gotten to take apart a bike before. The back wheel is the hardest to take off, the nuts were super tight, and we kept forgetting righty-tighty, lefty-loosey. How we got the, how we got the tire was that Mr. Wyon came and pulled the nut off.
Hello, my name is Eva and I'm going to be talking about cleaning. During our cleaning, we used vinegar bottles, toothpaste, and toothbrushes. We all tried our best to do what we could do to get these bikes looking beautiful for these lucky boys and girls. It went really well. The ball bearings from the bikes went from the grossest to the cleanest part of the bike.
This is reassembly. For reassembly, we did, oh, after we got the clean parts, we started screwing them on to the new and clean and painted bikes. And these pictures that you see. We screwed, it was a lot better than disassembly. From my opinion, I think it's a lot better than disassembly because for reassembly, you get to put back clean and new, pretty parts. Instead of doing those crusty, musty, rusty parts than the others. Example, when I was doing the tires or putting on the tires, it kind of hurt in my hand a lot, but it was still fun. Because once, for this whole project, once you do something once, you know, you should know how to do it the second time. Please join us on Thursday, the 19th, 2024, from 9:00 to 10:00 at Citrus Elementary, room 16.
We, we have our open house tomorrow and we'll have our bikes up and our students will have all the things that we've worked on and compiled. And if you guys would like to come to Citrus from 9:00 to 10:00, you're more than welcome to join us, so. Yeah, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the less fun part, the academics. Well, I mean, sorry, you guys are the boss. I didn't say that. So, oh geez, okay, here we go. In math, we covered standard CCSS math content, 5G A1, which I'm sure you already know what that is. But for the people in the back, that's, that's graphing. So we did graphing during our project. We also did decimals. And when we got things donated, like petals or what have you, we did, we would multiply the amount so that we could, I would, I kind of try to use as much when that comes in to do lots of math problems. And it's highly motivating when you're doing math problems based on the price of petals versus just the price of Sally's whatever thing, so. Language arts, we, we write letters and send them out. One thing that's really cool about this is we get to emphasize the appropriate audience and how you speak to the appropriate audience. So typically you write, I can say you're writing to a classmate or to whoever, but really ends up being me reading the essay. So this opportunity to write to someone that's in the community, a business owner, gives them a chance to really focus on truly writing to that person. And then a little NGSS for science, generate and compare complete possible solutions. And there's just a lot of problem solving. And a lot of it ends up being, especially at the beginning, students start off pretty quickly wanting help. And then as the project goes on and I allow them to struggle as we go through to the end, they ask for help a lot less and that's just based on their growth and problem solving. All right, then we got technical and practical skills. One thing we grow in is mechanical knowledge, just their understanding of how a bike works and how to engineer and reverse engineer things. We do diagramming. We do this at the very beginning to learn all the parts of a bike and the names of the parts. All right, Eden.
So today, I'm going to be talking about tool proficiency. Me and my group started off okay at the beginning of the year, but at the end, we were great at using tools. We were good at using wrenches, screwdrivers, and tire levers. And almost there was a, and almost there was a time that I was using a tool on my tire and I was twisting on the wrench the wrong way. Then I hit myself when it slipped off of my grip, but I'm fine. I got better since. I didn't get hurt on my bike anymore. As you can see, me and my group improved more than the start.
In the journal, we also create an instruction manual. So we say what, what's happening when, and then we go in the reverse order to reassemble. We also take our donations and put them on a Google sheet. And then we do a little bit about learning how to type in formulas and then we turn it into charts and graphs too, so we can focus on those areas.
My group grew in working together by talking to each other more. We needed to be more generous and share tools more because there was a lot going off the lawn. When we were cleaning bikes, there were a lot of parts to clean. So we needed to be more generous by sharing tools and more.
So the three basic areas, if I go back through them, is academics, just shooting, I forgot what I was going to say, technical skills, and then life skills. So those, those three are woven together. Yeah, and then we got.
One thing my group had trouble with but kept going was the back tire because there was the nuts, the brake, and the chain, but we got it. Every once in a while, someone from our group would make sure all the tools were straight.
Every week, we have different virtues. One virtue might be friendliness, one might be joyfulness, or even perseverance. Two virtues I know that me and my classmates have was perseverance and friendliness. We used perseverance in class by not giving up on our bike refurbishing project. And if we didn't have friendliness, we would all be mad at each other.
A couple other life lessons to highlight, we learned that we can do hard things. We learned that we can impact someone else's life with our actions and get our hands super dirty. And then we also learned to be good stewards of possessions and that things are not expendable, that we can take old things and make them new. And then philanthropy is the other thing, is that we get to be givers. I do want to highlight first, Mr. Bransky, who, I'm basically just stealing his program. So, anyway, he's the man. And a couple, two bike shops that helped me out, North Rim and Green Line. And then we get the bikes from Sensible Cyclory. And then Conqueror's Elite is who paints our bike frames. So these, these were all the bikes that we did. And then we, with our fundraising, we had some extra funds. And so we bought these two from North Rim, so.
Hi, I'm Madeline, and as a class, we want to be flamist. A flamist is a person who does nice things and doesn't want things back. We did a lot of hard work, disassembly and cleaning. All the kids in our class don't normally give. We would like. We have like normal kids and we don't get any things. But I know that everyone in my class is excited to give a lucky kid a bike and wants him to be happy. I'm glad to have people like this.
Can you guys introduce yourselves? Just, yeah, Shilpa, you can start us off.
I'm Shilpa H.
I'm Serenity Golia.
I'm Madeline Cox.
I'm Zenaya Rico.
I'm Anton, I'm Antonio Padilla.
I'm Emma Barocas.
I'm Anastasia Mueller's.
I'm Zuri Turner.
I'm Eva Jensen.
I'm James Stevens.
I'm Harrison Calatti Garcia.
I'm Eden King.
Thanks for having us. I just wanted to say thank you so much. This is such an amazing program. Thanks, thanks. I'll speak for all of us, thank you.
And I just want to say to our new board members, this is what it's all about. Kids and learning in action and giving back. We have just fabulous teachers, fabulous students. And Mr. Bransky waved because you did start this program, so thank you for doing that. Before our fabulous Citrus families leave, I want to again invite Gloria Gudinas up to the microphone.
At Citrus, we cherish our tradition of surprising staff with the superintendent's award, creating heartfelt unforgettable moments that allow them to truly experience the joy and recognition in the moment. So Gina, will you come up here, please? Gina was a nervous wreck. Come on up. I am honored tonight to present Gina Laffeb with the superintendent's award for classified personnel. J.K. Rowling said, "When in doubt, go to the library." The library is a place where many children go not only to learn and read, but also for warmth and safety. Citrus is so fortunate to have Gina as our trusted caring and exceptional library median assistant. Gina has been at Citrus for just a few years and has made an indelible impression on every student and staff member during that time. She is kind, caring, and outstanding at her job. Citrus students trust her and look forward to their weekly visits to her welcoming library space. Her commitment does not end with the library visits. She knows students by name, what types of books they enjoy, and opens the library at every opportunity for students to come and spend their free time. I want to thank you, Gina, for your continued commitment to our Citrus students and staff. We are so fortunate to have you as our part of our community.
All right, Citrus, let's hear it for Gina. There you go, we're going to get a quick picture, congratulations. Congratulations.
I would now like Ms. Emmy Valdez to come up. Emmy is our school counselor at Citrus. It is my great pleasure to honor Emmy with the superintendent's award for certificated personnel. Her wavering dedication and profound compassion have made a lasting impact on our Citrus students. Emmy is a beacon of support, a confidant to both students and staff, and she is a source of comfort for all that engage with her. She is without a doubt the most trusted adult on campus. She truly sets her apart. What truly sets her apart is the way she creates trust with students during the most difficult times. She has a knack for making sure that students and staff feel respected, heard, valued, and supported. If we gave her a penny for every time a student was looking for Ms. Emmy, she would have already retired. Emmy, thank you for the positive difference you make every day and the many hearts you have touched and supported. We could not nearly be as successful at Citrus if you weren't a part of it.
Thank you.
Well, we have certainly had Citrus in the house tonight. Uh, we do want to give you an opportunity, if you want to stay for the rest of the board meeting, by all means do so, um, but do not feel obligated. I know it is right before the holidays and kids have tests, I'm sure, tomorrow, so feel free to go. Thank you again, Citrus.
Thank you all so much. Have a wonderful night if you choose to leave. Well, that was amazing and I love getting start the meetings on such a positive note, seeing what our schools are doing. And now we get on to the much more boring stuff. Um, because we do have new board members, uh, we are going to move on to our organizational meeting. We hold an annual organizational meeting, uh, for election of officers as per ed code. Uh, we are, at this point, going to elect our officers. We elect a president, a vice president, and a clerk of the board. The election will be held in this manner. For president first, then vice president, then clerk. Anyone may nominate any member of the board. Once everyone has had an opportunity to nominate, then we will go through and vote on each individual nominee. Uh, the first nominee who gets three votes, uh, shall hold that office. Do we have any questions or anything we need to clarify before we move into that process? Seeing none, okay. Um, are there any nominations for the office of president?
Sorry, I would like to nominate Rebecca Conken.
Very good. Are there any others?
I think we skipped something.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what's that?
Aren't we usually allowing each member to kind of introduce themselves and give a background of their involvement and qualifications before nominations are put forward? That's what I remember. I'm sorry, I don't have the stuff in front of me, but.
Excuse me. I believe what we have done in the past is that we have gone through nominations and then each person has been allowed to make a statement, um, if they are interested in holding the position and, um, you know, what other, other comments that they might make. But I don't believe every board member has made a statement, just those that were running for office or were interested or nominated.
Okay, that works for me.
Are there any other nominees?
Uh, Mr. Lando?
Yeah.
If you're willing, I'd like to nominate you for president.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Uh, seeing none, um, Ms. Conken, if you want to give a statement?
I'm Rebecca Conken and, um, this is my second year serving as a trustee. And I think what I'd like to say about myself is, um, I feel like my focus is definitely the students and I bring to this position, um, the parent perspective. I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner, so I have quite a bit of experience, um, with kids and, um, the developmental stages. And I, in preparation for potentially the role of president, I did attend, um, the workshop at our last CSBA conference where, um, I had the opportunity to, um, gain some insight on what it would look like to be the president of the board. Although it's only my second year, I am willing to rise to the occasion and serve as president, um, if it's the will of the board. And I'm a mom of four kids, um, a wife, a nurse practitioner, actively involved in the community, um, serving, um, as a leader of 4H and, um, lots of experience with sports. And I, I'd like to just say my, my greatest strength is, um, that I bring the parent perspective. Thank you for the, the nomination, I appreciate that. I would be, um, proud to serve as president.
Excellent, thank you so much. I guess I'll do the same. My name is Tom Lando. I've been on the board for six years now. Wow. Serving as vice president currently. Um, in my day job, I am a, uh, teacher and a, uh, coach. I lead a team of teachers, um, in improving educational practices and I love it. Um, also a parent of two, uh, one of whom has successfully gone through the Chico Unified System. I think I will bring, uh, institutional memory to this position as well as a deep understanding of educational systems, Chico Unified, and a, uh, desire to build consensus among the board and move us all forward, keeping students at the focus. And I've got to switch back into running this meeting briefly mode. So, um, as Ms. Conken was nominated first, uh, let's have, um, a vote, starting from left to right, I suppose. So if, uh.
Awkward.
Right? If you are in favor of, uh, Ms. Conken for president, uh, please say aye.
Conken aye.
Olson aye.
Lando nay.
Hayes nay.
Robinson nay.
Very well, um, I guess we'll start down there again with, uh, votes for Mr. Lando.
Conken aye.
Thank you.
Olson aye.
Thank you. Lando aye.
Hayes aye.
Robinson aye.
Thank you very much, that means a lot. Um, we'll use the exact same process to fill the role of, uh, vice president. Um, I would like to go ahead and nominate Ms. Conken for vice president.
I accept.
Excellent, are there any other nominees? Seeing none. Uh, how about we start on this end this time?
Robinson aye.
Hayes aye.
Lando aye.
Olson aye.
Conken aye.
Excellent, right on, we got a team. And we do need a clerk.
I'd like to nominate someone if possible.
Take it away.
Um, I'd like to nominate, um, Gail, if you'd be willing to accept.
Well, since I heard a little bit about what, what's involved in that, I would happily accept. Thank you.
It's a dirty job, but someone's got to do it. Do we have any other nominees for clerk? Nicky, so you want to start the voting again?
Conken aye.
Olson aye.
Lando aye.
Hayes aye.
Robinson aye. And how's your writing hand?
On my left, I think.
Oh, you're a lefty.
We are, it's amazing. We have more lefties up here now? That's, I don't know if that's a first. Uh, before we move on though, we do also need to appoint a secretary of the board. By custom as well as our bylaws, that is normally the superintendent. So, um, I would like to move to appoint superintendents daily as the secretary of the board. We have a second?
I'll second your motion, Mr. Lando.
Perfect. Any debate about this one? Seeing none, we'll start with member Robinson.
Robinson aye.
Hayes aye.
Lando aye.
Olson aye.
Conken aye.
And there we have it, you're stuck again.
I just want to reassure you, it is Erica that does ninety-nine percent of the work, so we're in good hands.
Excellent. Thank you all so much. Um, we are going to move on to setting the date, time, and place of the regular meeting. Uh, that is agenda item five point five. Do we have a presentation on this one? Do we have anybody who needs to say anything?
You do have in your packet a list of, traditionally, we hold our board workshop on most first Wednesdays of the month. Uh, there are some exceptions to that, December, June, July. And then the regular meeting at which we have business is the third Wednesday of the month. And so those are listed for you in your board packet and they are on the screen.
I have too many packets up here, I'm sorry.
It's both electronically in your packet and just up on the screen.
Yes, it's right in front of me, thank you so much. Does any member of the board have any questions regarding either the layout of the agenda or the, uh, time and place of our meetings?
I have a comment.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the paragraph, starting, um, the twenty twenty-five meeting calendar, first and third Wednesdays, it mentions in there that the regular meeting location will be Marigold via live stream. Special meeting locations at Marigold. And, um, where's the workshop meeting? The board, what I'm looking for is that the first meeting of the month is usually our board workshop. And I understand we could have some discussion regarding a different location for our workshop meetings. Does the board have any desire to look at a possible different location for our workshop meetings in order to free up this facility for the use of Marigold School?
Yeah, I know we have heard that having two meetings a month at Marigold impacts their after-school program and their operations some. So I guess my technical question would be, is it feasible that perhaps we hold the workshop meetings at the large conference room of the district office?
We certainly can. The regular board meetings, some The regular board meetings sometimes require a larger venue. We do have really good technology and technology staff that is here. So we could do the board workshops, which tend to be mainly board members and staff. Occasionally, it's a fun topic, and we get lots of people attending. And if we could judge that ahead of time, we could move that if need be. But we probably wouldn't have as high a level as technology. And I'm looking at my tech guys over here at the district office as we do here. We have a pretty good setup here. But then again, the workshops really are designed for more of a conversation, so you don't need, you know, the individual camera on each person like we do at our regular meetings. So, short answer, yes.
I'm looking at the tech guys, too. Does that seem reasonable?
It depends on what tech you need, who does have the resources to make that happen.
Okay.
I have another comment. The reason why I was fumbling around looking for what I was looking for is that it indicates that regular board meetings on the third Wednesday and special board meetings on the first Wednesday, we usually don't call them special board meetings. We call them our workshop meetings. So that's why I was misdirected in my thinking of what I was looking for. So shall we make a wording change, or is every, was I the only one confused?
Is there a legal requirement regarding the names?
We do call them workshops because that's what they've developed into for us, but technically they are special board meetings. So our lingo is a little different than what Ed Code or CSBA might call them.
So, just to clarify, they are supposed to be called special?
There's different types of meetings that are listed and that boards can hold, and workshops fall under the special board meeting category.
Okay.
We can still call them workshops.
We can even call them both. Are there any other questions for staff regarding this topic?
I don't see any problem with it, as long as it's clearly stated on the website as to the location and if we're able to get, allow students to be here when they need to be here. Seems like it's in their best interest to them.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this topic? Anybody out there have big feelings about where and when we hold the meetings? Seeing none. Are there any motions from the board regarding this topic?
I'll motion that our regular board meetings would be held here at Marigold, and our special board meetings would be held in the large conference room at Chico Unified.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Member Hayes, and a second by Member Olson. Any discussion on this topic that we haven't already had?
I don't, I, I, thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'm searching for something I can't find, which at this age gets to be a pretty regular occurrence. But we normally stay away from March 17th. We don't have it listed. We have March 12th, but then there's an asterisk after March 12th of 2025. Does that mean we've checked it out and we are in alignment with Butte College and Chico State for that break?
Our breaks are the student calendar, and those are aligned with Chico State and Butte College, correct?
Okay. So that's, I don't see an explanation for the asterisk, but that's what it's supposed to mean.
Yeah. So there's an explanation in the paragraph that that's not the first Wednesday, unless otherwise noted with an asterisk. So it's just denoting that that is not the first Wednesday. That is the second Wednesday in March.
Okay. As long as, as long as we've stayed away from the fun times in March.
So I'm understanding that the reason we only have one board meeting that, that month is because of the holiday, the spring breaks? Is that-
Correct.
Okay.
Spring break falls during the third week, so this got moved up to the second week.
Okay.
We do not have board meetings at the board workshops during spring break, during winter break, and then typically, we don't have them during the summer.
And of course, if we need to, if there's an emergent issue, we can always call a special meeting with 72 hours' notice.
One other thing I did want to call to your attention. For the past couple of years, the board has chosen not to have a board meeting in July. So that is something to consider. It is listed here as a board meeting, but that is 100%, of course, up to the board, whether or not you want to have a meeting in July.
So July would be the first meeting at which we'd have the new superintendent, correct?
That is correct.
That's an excellent point, and given that, I think we might want to leave it on the menu for now. Yeah?
I'm remembering, it seems like we wait closer to the time to decide, correct? And then we always have the option to put it back on the calendar?
Yeah. Yes. It seems like leaving it on the calendar for now, and then if we want to take it off as we approach, we can certainly do that.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, yes, I concur with what you just said, that for this year, with the engagement of our new superintendent on July 1, that leaving a meeting scheduled with the knowledge that we quite often cancel them would be our best move this year, because our new superintendent may want to, may want to have some topics at that board meeting that he would be interested in getting us all aligned with before we go into the August crunch of getting school open.
Is there any further discussion on the motion on the table, which is for meetings as listed here with the move of the special meeting workshops to the district office large conference room?
And then one other thing, just for the board to consider. Typically, our special board meetings or board workshops start at 5:00 and closed session follows. Our regular board meetings start at 6:00 with closed session at 5:00 prior. So just want to make sure when we approve it, we're doing that as well, unless the board desires a change.
Does that work for all the board members to be available at 5:00 on each day, with the understanding that on special board meetings, the closed session will be held afterwards?
Yes. I believe that our rationale for doing that is because workshop meetings quite often involve staff, and that getting them into the meeting and out starting at 5:00 rather than later is our desire, because we have so many of our staff committed to those workshop special meetings. And, you know, having them stay late just isn't good practice for us. Or, no, our practice for them is not good if we go that way.
Yes, we like them away from the office for at least eight hours in a row. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Actually, we've already had unanimous votes this meeting, so we can go right ahead. And just all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Hearing none, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Let us, oh, you know, I talked about agenda already, but it's its own item. I'm sorry. Moving on to Item 5.6, the agenda layout. We all have in front of us a copy of the agenda. Are there any changes to the way the agenda looks that anyone would like to introduce? Or anything about the way the agenda is presented that we need to change for the betterment of the meetings to the public?
Just as a small note to that, you have both a board workshop agenda. Board workshops are focused really on a topic that's determined by the board, and those are the ones that start at 5:00 and typically involve staff. And then you have the regular board meeting agenda, which is the one that does have two different opportunities for comments from our public.
Are there any technical questions or questions of clarification from the board? Seeing none. Is there any public comment regarding the format of the agenda? Again, seeing none. Are there any motions associated with this agenda?
I move approval.
Is that a motion to keep the agenda as it is?
I move approval of the agenda without changes. Yes. Thank you, sir.
Very good. We have a motion by Member Robinson and a second by Vice President Conken. Any discussion or debate on this topic? Seeing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none. It is unanimous. Thank you. And our last of the organizational items, workshop committee assignments. This is Item 5.7. As we do have two new members, we need to adjust our committee assignments a little bit. Staley?
Yes. When the board voted back in August to set up the topics for board workshops, as well as the board member liaisons, that board voted that our two new board members be given the opportunity to serve on the Chico Unified School District Student Achievement Data and California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress Information Presentation, which is coming up on February 5th. So just want to make sure that both Ms. Hayes and Ms. Olson are ready and willing to serve in that capacity, and then it will require a vote of the board.
I am ready and willing. Thank you.
Perfect. Looking forward to it.
All right.
Excellent. Getting to dive into that data is a really great way to kind of get in the nuts and bolts of academic achievement for the whole district. So thank you both for being willing to do that.
Then we do have one other one. We have an open position on our ongoing. It's not necessarily a board workshop, but it is ongoing efforts to ensure that Chico Unified has athletic sustainability and co-curricular activities. And currently, Ms. Conken serves on that, in that role, and there should be two. So if there's anybody that is interested in serving in that capacity, that would be fabulous.
I'm interested.
Sounds like you're it. Excellent. All right, do we-
And just a last note, one other change that did occur. Ms. Dolby was serving on our facilities committee, and Ms. Conken is now taking over in that position. It was voted on by the board in August. With the departure of Ms. Dolby, Ms. Conken, you are now on the facilities committee. So if we can have a motion to vote and approve those, we'll be set and ready to go and get right down to business.
Mr. President? Yes. Move approval with the recommended changes, or it's not recommended, with the notated changes.
I'll second that myself. And make sure that, Erica, you got all those for the record. Thank you so much. Is there public comment, since we are making a motion? Anybody out there concerned about our committee assignments? Seeing none. We already have the motion on the table. Is there any discussion up here? None? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right on. We are there. Thank you so much. Which moves us on to Agenda Item 6. Agenda Item 6 is announcements. Does anybody up here have an announcement they wish to make for the benefit of the public and the audience? Usually, we use this time to talk about upcoming events or other items of note that are of public interest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just under announcements, just to let the public that just voted yes on Measure C know that there was a first organizational planning meeting last Friday, very well attended by all of the schools impacted by the passage of that bond. And I just want to thank everyone in attendance for being there and looking forward to having Ms. Conken join us the next. I don't have a schedule yet, so I don't know when the next one is. And no Julie Kissel. Oh, there's Julie Kissel. Do we have a meeting date? Can't hear.
She said that there will be a series of meetings. She'll send out information about it after the first.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is an appropriate time to mention this, but I'll go for it, and you can tell me otherwise. It's just been especially on my heart, in light of the recent situation down in, with the school shooting. Safety has come to the forefront of my mind, so I've been spending some time recently just meeting with community members and police department, and I hope to, in the next, in the new year, in January, agendize school safety and bringing back, hopefully, SROs on campus. So I just wanted to give our board an update and just express my condolences to the community and just that it's heavy on my heart, and that's a goal of mine and something I want to share with my constituents who voted me into this position.
I also wanted to share that today I had the honor of going to a reading pals conference, well, they did a training at the Faith Lutheran Church, and it was super well-attended. It was amazing how many reading pals came to the event. The chairs here wouldn't have fit everyone. And I did invite, there, if you're not familiar with reading pals, they're, they are volunteers who serve after school. And one of the comments from the floor, first of all, Kristi did a presentation, and can you help me with her last name? Kristi Bangson. Thank you. She did a great presentation, and actually, I, I might have slid them. She had a great little activity of how to, like, teach the alphabet and get kids reading. And it was, I thought she did such a great job that I thought it would be really cool if she could come and present to the board, just as a means of educating the public about things, strategies to help readers. But one of the members, one of the volunteers stated that she hoped that maybe reading pals could go into the actual classroom during the day and not just be after school, and that what was, what were the things that was holding that back? And so I invited them to come to the board and, you know, ask that question.
So I will send out tomorrow the board member request to add an agenda item, and sounds like we have a couple coming, and that'll be great, and we'll get those scheduled.
Excellent. Right on, you guys. Thank you all. I believe, unless there are any other announcements, that we are on to Item 7, which is items from the floor. We do have two requests to speak. So as per usual, I know both of these speakers are old hands at this, but this is for items that are not agendized. As such, we will not engage or respond to avoid violating the Brown Act. The speakers will have three minutes. There's a beautiful timer back there. They will get an alert at 30 seconds, so they know that the time is close to running out. And if there's extra time after the listed speakers, who have turned in cards ahead of time, then we will take extra speakers from the audience, if there are any. Did I miss anything? In that case, Ms. Michelle Cooper, please, come on up.
Good evening. I think Rebecca and I must be on the same wavelength right now, so.
So I just want to take a moment to address, address an issue that should be at the forefront of all of your minds, and that is school safety. And excuse me, I'm a little raspy tonight. During my campaign, I was proud to receive, the only candidate to receive, the endorsements from Chico Police Officers Association, Sheriff Corey Honee, and former Police Chief Mike O'Brien. These law enforcement officials knew that I was the one that was committed to safety and that I was the one that was willing to make sure that we had safe learning environments for our children. They knew I would work tirelessly to bring back officers onto our campuses, where they play a critical role in preventing violence, fostering trust, and responding to emergencies. Although I was not elected, I still feel a deep obligation to advocate for what is right. The recent tragic school shooting in Palermo is a devastating reminder that we cannot take safety for granted. This incident hits too close to home, and it serves as a stark warning that inaction could cost us dearly. Our children's lives are too valuable to gamble with. We must take proactive steps to ensure that their safety, and one of the, that their safety, and one of the most effective ways to do this is by reinstating officers on our campuses. These officers are not just enforcers of the law, they are mentors, they are responders, and they are a vital part of our school community. I urge at least one of you to stand up and do what's right, and I think that's going to be Rebecca, and I thank you. Make school safety our top priority. Put officers back on our campuses as soon as possible. We have an opportunity to lead with courage and foresight. Let's not wait for another tragedy to force us into action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Gina Bax.
Good evening. My name is Gina Bax. I'm a parent advocate. I'm also a reading pal volunteer, mother of five, Rosal, and PD parent. For the past three years, I've been attending school board meetings on and off to understand how the school system functions in this country. Here are the key points I have learned. Composition of the school board. The elected board members are often retired teachers backed by teachers' unions, creating an uneven playing field for candidates. And the newly elected board members are no exception. You had the privilege to be funded and supported by the unions. Thanks to them, your campaign materials were displayed inside our schools on the bulletin boards, and you had opportunities to promote your campaigns within our schools. This privilege were denied to the other candidates. I hope that in the future, we can ensure equitable opportunities and resources for all candidates to reach out to the community, so everyone has the same chance to succeed. As Ms. Olson stated at the League of Women Candidates Forum, it is not what is fair, but what is equitable. Impact of identity politics. Decisions influenced by identity politics and ideologies have led to costly problems for the district, including legal battles. Identity politics have caused division, confusion, and again, inequitable outcomes. Tension between parents and school staff. Board decisions have created tension among parents and teachers, making difficult the collaboration for the well-being of all children. Four, challenges for educators. Teachers struggle with imposed lesson plans that do not align with their academic goals. It is your job to review school material and ensure only academic-age-appropriate resources are available to all children, so they can think critically. Number five, community discontent. Community members are increasingly frustrated with the board's handling of school challenges. For example, we have a Chico State professor, a title she doesn't even deserve, in my opinion, who openly celebrates the destruction of our town, harasses, bullies, and attacks everyone who disagrees with her. Yet, this board, and the majority, has stayed silent and allows this pathetic behavior to continue. No consequences, no accountability. As you took your oath, I want to remind you that your primary responsibility is to uphold the Constitution of the United States and to represent all children, including those of the 7,000 who voted for change. As leaders, you're responsible for ensuring that everyone in our community has a voice. We need a board that builds bridges between parents and teachers, one that sets aside personal beliefs to make decisions in the best interest of all. Ideologies and identity politics have no place in our institutions. We must stop treating children like adults and adults like children. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Yes.
Good evening, board. Good evening, board and community members. My name is Sergio Barajas with the NorCal Carpenters Union. I'm here to talk about the importance of apprenticeship, fair wages, and healthcare for our workers. When I graduated high school, I didn't know what I really wanted to do. I know college was a great option. I tried and later realized it wasn't for me. Then I joined the trades. I started off making less than 20 an hour, traveling far with minimal healthcare. Shortly after, I joined the union, where I started making livable wages, full benefits, retirement, and an apprenticeship program that provided knowledgeable information. The compensation, training, benefits made me feel appreciated and wanted to be the best worker I could be. Construction work is physically taxing, and means to healthcare is essential. It is our priority to provide healthcare and safety measures to protect and preserve our workers. By hiring responsible contractors, we ensure that workers have access to emergency medical services and preventative healthcare. In California, 26% of construction workers lack health benefits, which is more than two and a half times the rate of all workers in the state of California. These workers are at risk of financial crisis without these benefits, and they deserve better. The apprenticeship program is important in maintaining a skilled workforce in the ever-evolving industry of construction. The apprenticeship program gave me a sense of purpose and drive, along with the knowledge, to be successful in the trades. This program is designed to create a new generation of skilled workers in the multiple facets of carpentry. It also instills a sense of pride and craftsmanship and responsibility in our apprentices. In conclusion, apprenticeship programs, fair wages, and healthcare are crucial in upholding a thriving industry. By prioritizing the well-being of workers, fair pay, and investing in skill development, we create not only a successful industry, but also support growth and prosperity for our communities. We hope to see your school district uphold the same values as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers with items from the floor?
Good evening, board. My name is Chris Martinez. I am a representative for the carpenters local 1599 out of Redding that encompasses this whole area and everywhere else. First, I'd like to say congratulations to the new board members. It's an awesome honor to have, and it's an honor for me to be here. Congratulations on your new bond measure. That's amazing. You guys are going to have a lot of good work coming your way. 1599, my carpenters, is actually the proud members that built this year a gem for you guys. So we're excited to be a part of the new regime and how everything's going to run. With that being said, we'd like to see, you know, a higher standard held for construction workers on projects like these schools. You know, a school is an institute of learning. So contractors that come on these job sites and don't have apprenticeship programs, I mean, apprenticeship program is an institute of learning. So to make sure that we're hiring our standards to that level, to make sure that we're bringing in contractors to build your school, bringing in the local workforce, students that went to your school, getting into the trades and bringing them back to rebuild the school they went to once. So it's really important to us that we look at the standards that we have set in place to make sure that we're not bringing in bad actor contractors. That, I see wage theft all over the North State right now, and I'm, you know, I know you guys probably heard about it and seen it too. So trying to find that, you know, standard where we can hold contractors accountable. Healthcare is very important in our trade. A lot of our people, if they get hurt, they're out for a long time. So making sure they have adequate healthcare is very important. So I'm here to ask you guys to look into your standards, and hopefully we can think of a plan together and raise the standards and making sure that our school is getting built by top-flight carpenters, men and women, and contractors. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Do we have any other speakers? Seeing none. We will go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. And thank you all for coming and letting us know where you're at. Appreciate that. It's an important part of this process. But for now, we are going to head on to the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that a member would like to pull for further discussion? Anything staff needs to pull? Okay. In that case, do we have a motion?
I move approval.
I second it.
All right. We have a motion by Member Robinson and a second by Member Hayes. Is there any discussion regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? No, it's seen. Very well. We are on to the fun stuff. Section nine is our discussion action calendar. First up, we have Business Services, item 9.1.1, or 9.1.1, forgive me, is Resolution Number 1669-24, authorizing the filing of applications for state allocation board-administered programs for CUST. Hi.
Hi.
Julie Kissel, take it away.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Julie Kissel. I'm the Director of Facilities and Construction for the school district. Tonight, I have before you two resolutions that are related to Proposition 2, which passed also, along with Measure C, back in November. It is going to be a very similar state funding process, as we have experienced in the past, with some small changes moving forward. The State Allocation Board and the Office of Public School Construction are hard at work on the changes to the program. They expect to have some results in the late spring. For now, districts who have current applications in for school funding need to reassure the State Allocation Board that we understand we will need a facilities master plan in place in order to qualify for these funding programs. Fortunately for us, we do have a comprehensive facilities master plan that was passed in the fall of 2023. So we already meet this requirement, but it is required that we confirm with them that you, the board, understands the requirement moving forward. So the two resolutions that you have in front of you are very similar. One is for new construction and modernization projects, and the other is for facilities hardship or seismic mitigation program. So 1669-24 is what's in front of you right now. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for clarification or questions for Julie regarding this?
I move approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that. Any discussion about this?
I just had a clarifying question again. I read the bulletin that came out with notifying about what was happening with the passage of Prop 2. Is there anything that they've mandated in the way of additional changes to our facilities master plans, or are we, in fact, good to go?
We are missing a small item that hasn't traditionally been included in our master plan, but the maintenance, deferred maintenance plan needs to be integrated in. So you will see that coming back to the board, probably in the springtime, where we'll integrate it into the master plan.
I thought I read that there was something, and that's it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Julie.
So it has always lived outside of the facilities master plan, but now we'll have to marry them together.
Thank you.
And I, so I just realized that I missed a step and did not ask for any public comment on this item. Seeing none, we can move on. Thank you so much. Ms. Hayes?
What's the minimum for the deferred maintenance percentage-wise?
3% of the general fund.
So one of the things that came up during, during the election was criticism about how did facilities get to the point where they are? And is the board and the district making sure that there is enough allocated for deferred maintenance, so that we don't have new facilities that are, you know, becoming, you know, problematic? Like, how do we end up with schools that have leaking roofs? You know, so I do think that that's something that is not necessarily for discussion tonight, but I think needs to be perhaps a discussion.
Yeah, that would absolutely be a worthwhile discussion on a separate agenda item. I encourage you to get it on one of the future agendas, and we'll see about it. Thank you very much.
Well, that is exactly why the state wants the deferred maintenance plan integrated into the facilities master plan, so that when they're contributing dollars to these important projects, it comes with the understanding that there will be funds to maintain them.
Any further discussion on this one?
Clarification question again. We're still at the mandated 3%.
Any further questions? Okay. In that case, we have a motion on the table already. Yes. All right. In that case, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 1669-24, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. And we'll jump right into the next one, which is 1670-24.
Yes. So as I stated earlier, this is the same resolution, but it is related to facility hardship or seismic mitigation projects. The state required a separate resolution specific to those programs.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll do the quick version. Any questions of clarification on this one? Do we have any public input on this topic? Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion by Member Robinson and a second by Member Conken. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 1670-24, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Do you have a?
I do, one more.
You're so exciting. Sorry, guys. I'm, I hope I'm not rushing or otherwise messing this up. It's my first time with the microphone on this much. A little nervous. All right, 9.1.3 is Resolution 1668-24. What's that about?
Thank you. So it's common practice for the Chico Unified School District to submit an exemption to the city of Chico for our projects. We are our own government agency, and our properties are zoned quasi-public property. And we exempt ourselves from their ordinances for our projects as common practice, as I said earlier. I want to make sure that you understand that we work very closely with the city of Chico. We do submit our plans to their engineering department, for their traffic engineering department, for advice and review, and we meet with them quarterly. So this is not to say that we do not want to work with the city of Chico, because we need to, and we do. But we do submit this resolution for your approval for exemption from ordinances from the city of Chico.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this one? Seeing none? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Looks like no. Is there a motion for this item?
I motion approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Member Hayes and a second from Member Olson. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are on to Item 914, which is the first interim budget for the 2425 school year.
All right. Hello, welcome board. My name is Marie Hartman. Myself and Sharice Bromley and Jaclyn Krueger are going to be presenting the 2425 first interim budget. So these are the major assumptions that we use to build the budget. Local control funding formula revenue is our largest source of revenue. It was based on the state adopted budget with the enacted state budget COLA of 1.07%. Funded average daily attendance will be based on prior year at 11,59443. Remember, we're given three options for our calculation of ADA, prior year, current year, or three-year average, and we use the one that's most advantageous to us. Unduplicated students' three-year average is estimated at 54.02%. The unduplicated count subgroups are English learners, free reduced students, and foster youth. So if a student falls into more than one of those categories, they're counted only once. Salaries and benefits reflect position control as of November 1st, and expenditures include that one-time 2% off salary schedule payment to all employees. Okay, this slide illustrates the actual versus funded ADA that I spoke about in the last slide. The graph on the left is actual enrollment and ADA, and on the right is the funded enrollment and ADA. So you can see that due to the utilization of the three options I spoke about, the graph on the right is much smoother. The options allow us to have more consistent funding year to year. So that's why we utilize those when possible. We're currently projecting that we'll be funded on prior year numbers as our projected enrollment for 2425 is that we'll be down 44 kids. Okay, and this slide illustrates unduplicated pupil percentage that I spoke about earlier. Unduplicated pupil percentage is always calculated on that three-year average. There's no other options. So if you look at the column on the left, you can see we had a little spike in UPP in '21, '22, up to 58%, but we've been declining since then. So the number here on the right to look for is 55% because at 55%, we receive concentration dollars over the three-year average. So we're projecting, based on the information that we had at the time of the budget development, that we will fall below that 55% this year in 2425. Okay, this is the big picture comparison of our estimates in the original budget, which was prepared in the spring, board approved it in June, versus where we are now at first interim. Sharice is going to talk a little bit more about some of the details on this. But if you look down at the bottom line, the change in fund balance, you can see we projected that we estimated a $1 million negative change in fund balance at original budget, and now our estimate is 3.78 million negative change in fund balance, which is quite the change. But almost all of that is attributed to that one-time 2% payment that we made to all unit members. It was 2.5 million. And this slide is just another look at that 2.5 million payment and its effect on the change in fund balance. If we took the payment to employees out, we're really operating at a deficit of 1.28 million rather than the deficit of the 3.7 million because that payment was one-time in nature. Sharice will take over. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Okay, so now we're going to get into a little bit more of the specifics of each comparison category. So first, we're going to look at revenues. Now, this is on the unrestricted side only. So you'll see the biggest part of our revenues have to do with local control funding formula, otherwise known as LCFF, which is largely driven by unduplicated pupil percentage, or UPP, and average daily attendance, or ADA. So you'll hear us use a lot of acronyms. We're trying to be clear about those tonight while you're getting familiar with our budget. But the biggest change that we had from original budget to first interim was local, and that mostly has to do with interest. So luckily, the county is doing a great job of investing our money right now, and so we're actually receiving much more in interest as the interest rates stay pretty high. So that'll help us with our local revenues. This pie chart helps to demonstrate when you're talking about unrestricted revenues, the biggest pot is our LCFF. So it's very important that we identify our unduplicated pupils properly, keep that percentage as high as possible because that drives our revenue, and also have our students in seats because that average daily attendance is another big part. Those two drive our LCFF. Okay, so this expenditures, it has a lot of numbers on here, so I'm going to try and break this down a little bit. The column on the left with those numbers is our original budget projections. Then we have our first interim projections and our difference. The first three lines are all staffing costs. So it's certificated salaries, classified salaries, and employee benefits. Then we get into our smaller expenditures, so books and supplies, physical materials, services and other operating, so that's a lot of contracts, travel expenditures, that kind of thing. But the biggest changes that we had from when we came to you with original budget has to do with our staffing, and as Marie mentioned, it's that 2% off the salary schedule payment that we made to employees. This pie chart just demonstrates that expenditure list that we just talked about. It also adds in our special ed contribution because that is not a unrestricted expenditure, but that pot of money that we spend on the restricted side is largely staffing. And so when we contribute for the general fund to help fund that program, it really is paying for our staff. So if you look at those four green categories, we really consider that our staffing. So that note at the bottom that mentions that 90% of our unrestricted expenditures and special ed contribution is staffing is because Chico Unified is in the people business. So most of our expenditures go to staffing. Yes, Eileen?
Question. I think I just misinterpreted something you said.
Okay.
In the pie chart, where it says special education contribution 16%, you said that that covers the staffing for special ed?
No, so what, and I'll get into this a little bit more detail on the next slide. So what I'm saying is we add the contribution in and include it in the staffing 90% because that contribution from the general fund pays for our staffing. It doesn't pay for all of our staffing because we do get state and local and federal revenues that help to pay for our special ed staffing. But really, when you think about the special ed contribution that we get from the unrestricted funds, it's helping us to pay for our special ed staff. Did that help? Maybe?
I know this is something I always have to pay close attention to because it takes me a couple of times through to understand it. And I do know that our special ed contribution percentage has continued to creep up.
Yeah, the percentage, so if we're going to go into the next slide. So I'll get into that in a little bit when I go into the contributions, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. So now that we talk about the transfers in from other funds. So first, we have transfers in. So that top line is our redevelopment agency that helps to pay for our routine restricted maintenance account, otherwise known as maintenance and operations. So that comes from state tax, or sorry, property taxes that we get from the county and helps us to fund our maintenance and operations department. We also budget for 3% of the developer fees that we anticipate to collect over the course of the year that'll be transferred into our unrestricted general fund. And then the bottom portion talks about contributions that we have from unrestricted to restricted programs. So that top one, Eileen, is our special ed contribution, which we're estimating is going to be just under 25 million. And that, the 25 million represents 59% of the total special ed expenditures. So the rest of that is covered by the grants that we receive from federal, state, and local dollars. But our contribution from the general fund is basically covering 59% of our special ed programs.
Of the total special ed program, not just the?
Staffing, not just staffing.
But we have to fund beyond.
Correct.
And this special ed 24 million, it says represents 59% of the total program costs.
Yes.
So within that?
So when you take the total expenditures of special ed and then consider the 25 million contribution, the 25 million contribution is 59% of our total expenditures for all special ed programs. Okay, and then the other contribution that we do to restricted programs is our routine restricted maintenance account, which was mentioned earlier. It's 3% of our total general fund expenditures, and we're estimating that to be about 6.4 million at this point. Okay, and then one addition that we made to this budget presentation this year is we wanted to show the special ed because we do have a lot of questions that have to do with special ed in our budgets. So this is a little different than the comparison slides you've seen in the last few slides. What we're actually looking at is that far-left column is 23, 24 actuals. So that's our enrollment, revenues, and expenditures that actually occurred in 2023, 2024, so last school year. And then what our budget currently shows as of first interim. So that's the comparison here. So it's a little bit different than what we've been looking at in the last few slides. So if you notice, our enrollment, just it keeps going up. Jen Scola did a presentation a couple of months ago and spoke about special ed identification and that our enrollment continues to increase. And so luckily, we do get a little bit more revenue, which is great, but we do have to contribute a little bit more every year as well. And so you'll see the salaries and benefits increased. That's due to three new special ed classrooms as well as new provider FTE. So full-time equivalent is FTE, and that's occupational therapists and speech. We added those this year. And then services increased for non-public schools. So those are certified by CDE, schools that are outside of Chico Unified that can help our students that need more than we can provide, unfortunately. And then also, the other increase had to do with county programs. So we do partner with the county programs. We have students that need help, and they go to those programs as well. They had an increase in cost, and so they pass those costs along, which means our increase, or we have an increase in our expenditures. Okay?
All right, so the other piece that we always come to the board with in addition to the current year budget is we certainly want to plan and look at the two future years. So what you have in front of you is what we call a multi-year projection or an NYPD. So that first column is the information that Sharice and Marie just went over. You can see the revenues there. The fourth line down, I would focus your attention on, and that is the change in fund balance, right? So that's going to tell us, are we underspending or overspending our revenues? And as it was stated, we are spending more than we are taking in in the current year, and we knew that. That was board-approved to give our employees a one-time payment, so we were aware of that. Going into next year, the deficit will be about 1.6 million, and you see that drastic back down, and that is because of the one-time payment in the current year. And then going out into '26, '27, a deficit of just over 4.3 million. We do have some one-time monies that are ending in '25, '26, and so those costs will then need to be picked up at the unrestricted side of the budget in '26, '27. We do have very healthy reserves. I do want to point that out. So at the very bottom line here, undesigned fund balance. Even in that third year, we still have over 800,000 that isn't designated for a particular purpose at this point in time. So a lot of words here essentially.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Again, I'm trying to follow along. You mentioned in the '25, '26 projected, the 1.6 million, and then you said you defined it as that there would be more dollars or there was coming in, but that it was still going up to 4 million. Explain that again.
So why you're seeing the swings essentially to go from 3.7 million down to 1.6
Right.
is because in the current year, we incurred 2.5 million to give our employees a one-time payment.
Okay.
But that doesn't exist next year at this point in time. So the value decreases down to 1.6 million. And then in the third year, there are costs that are currently being covered by restricted dollars that the unrestricted side of the budget will need to pick up in that third year.
Okay, that's the part I missed and had questions about. I think I'll come back into your office on another day.
So I kind of went over the dollars first, but I do want to back up and talk about the assumptions that we used in this. We are looking at pretty flat enrollment over the next couple of years, a slight decrease next year, and basically flat in '26, '27. We have seen a ramp up of TK, and that's helped our enrollment. Full implementation is next year, and so we'll see that kind of level off at that point in time. Right now, the Department of Finance is estimating COLA next year at 2.93% and just over 3% in the following year. Those are just a calculation based on eight economic data points, so they will change. I will tell you that now. The other piece we want to point out is obviously we take into account that we have step and column increase and utilities are increasing. But we also acknowledge that we do have employees who are retiring, typically at the upper end of the salary schedule, and hiring employees starting on the lower end of the salary schedule. So we do take that into account. Going back to TK, so it's really exciting. We have full implementation next year in '25, '26. So the date moves back a couple more months. So we are anticipating adding another class related to that date change. But more importantly, at full implementation of transitional kindergarten is the ratio for the classes. So currently, we can have 24 students in a class with two adults. So we have a teacher and an aide, so a 12-to-one ratio. At full implementation, that goes down to 20 students with two adults in the class, so 10-to-1. So we currently have 15 TK classes. So just to serve those students, we will need to add another three classes. So you'll see four classes here. Three are related to the ratio change, and one is related to the enrollment, the date of when students can enroll. And as alluded to, we are seeing continued expansion of students identified via NIEP. So we are expecting two more additional classes in special ed next year and one in the following year. Two is typically what we've been seeing the last several years, so that's staying on par with historical. So this is the one-time money I was talking about, this very first one, AM-IAM discretionary block grant. That is the one that's going away in June of '26 and why we see some of the increased costs in '26, '27. Many of these are services-only or very limited positions, but I do want to point out that the learning recovery block grant was issued to Chico Unified in the amount of over $12 million. Very fortuitous for us. We do have a lot of staff in that grant. And so I know the four of us at this table and many of our ed services team are also actively monitoring those positions to be aware of when they end and then how can we find alternative funding to continue those positions. So many of those positions are our certificated counselors and our classified targeted case managers.
I must be on a delay switch or something. So our very important counselors and targeted case managers and stuff, we are having to look at grants that will keep us able to fund those positions. Is that what you just said?
Essentially. I mean, we're certainly always looking for grants to enhance our program for our students and families. What I'm saying is currently, the funding that covers many of those counselors and targeted case managers targeted case managers will be ending in June of '28. And so we're already monitoring that, and we're planning for that to find alternative funding to be able to continue those services.
Another thing to keep my eye on. Thank you.
So it's great to have a budget, but we always have to have cash in the bank, right? We need to be able to make payroll. So we are sitting on nice cash balances and very typical cash pattern the last couple of years. You know, in December, property taxes come in, so we get a nice spike in this month, and then we continue to spend. But I do want to point out that the dotted line is the current year, and if you look at June, it actually drops, which is atypical from the prior years. And that is because the state-approved budget for '24, '25 includes a quote-unquote "cut" by the state of California, which is to not pay LEAs, local educational agencies, in June, but to pay them maybe the first week of July. And so it's important that in order to make payroll that month and pay all of our other vendors, that we do have a nice cash balance to do that. It was only a one-month or one-week deferral, but it was a cut utilized by the state, and I would anticipate in tighter times that the state will continue to utilize this as a mechanism for cutting the state budget. So we do have to self-certify our budget as positive, qualified, or negative. And you can see in front of you, positive says we will meet our obligations, qualified is may not, and negative is will not. I'm happy to say we're self-certifying as a positive first interim budget. You can see in the current year and the two out-years that we have enough reserves to cover all of our expenditures. So where do we go from here? So next steps, the governor in mid-January is going to come out with his preliminary proposal for next school year already, for '25, '26. We are getting word that the statutory COLA is probably going to soften. Right now, it's about 2.93% is what the Department of Finance has. I've heard anywhere between 2.2% and 2.4%, but no one is a predictor of that, but we are expecting a softening of that. We're going to jump right into enrollment and staffing right after the first of the year. I'll be working very closely with Mr. Shepherd in looking at that. Of course, there's LCAP feedback meetings and community meetings that we receive feedback from as well. And then myself and Sharice and Marie will be back in March with a second interim, or the second update for the year for the budget. And that will be very important, because then we'll have a little bit more information of what the '25, '26 year will look like. And that's what we have for you this evening for the first interim budget for '24, '25.
A lot of information there. Do we have any questions of clarification?
Not necessarily clarification, but so is there a set strategy for identifying your unduplicated for each of the categories, like foster youth? And I know that in the past, some districts have done like a push to make sure that every single family who qualifies for free and reduced lunch, that we're doing an outreach to make sure that they're filling out the appropriate paperwork, you know, that families are filling out the paperwork. But I was also interested in, like, foster youth.
So I can speak to the free and reduced lunch count, and then maybe Tina can pipe in. So this year, for the first time, all of our schools from a federal level were eligible for CEP, which is Community Eligibility Provision. Essentially means free meals for all at the federal level. So we are legally not allowed to collect the lunch applications data. So what we did instead was we created an alternative income form through ARES registration. So when parents went in to validate their information through ARES, there was an alternative income form within that. So we're hoping to be able to collect a lot of information there. And then we also have targeted case managers at our sites who do reach out to families who haven't completed that information in an effort to make sure that we can garner all of that information and really maximize the dollars generated for Chico Unified.
I would add too that Jamie McLaughlin, who works as our foster youth and homeless liaison, also has a good pulse on our foster youth families and works closely with them to get them their information needed as well.
Thank you.
Again, less of a question, though it may end up asking from you, Jacqueline. Just those projections are dire. We see our, if these projections hold, we see our reserve fund depleting. And I just want to make sure that we're all keeping that in mind over the next year or so, as we make any kind of decision about spending money that we really need to be careful about. We've been sitting on a fairly healthy reserve for several years now, and if these hold true, that won't be the case. And we really need to think very carefully about how we make sure that the programs that we put in place, we're getting the biggest educational bang for our buck. And I'm curious, actually, what level of confidence do we have in these, in like the third-out-year projection?
I'm not a magician, so I mean, true, honestly, they're probably wrong, right? They are the best information that we have now, and really, the multi-year projection is a planning tool. It is to bring that awareness of what is going to happen, you know, two and a half years from now, and how do we make decisions today so that we don't get into that impact in that third year, right? So a dollar saved now is $2 next year and $3 the following year. So to mitigate drastic cuts, it's always better to catch it on the front end. So it is a planning tool to be aware, so that there isn't a surprise when we come some June to say, hey, here's original budget, and we're deficit-spending $5 million, right? So it's to be able to look at this information now and continually update this information every time we bring a budget forward to the board.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions for our financial staff? Do we have any public comment regarding the first interim budget? Very well. Do we have a motion?
Let me see if I can say this right. I would like to move approval of the first interim budget.
Absolutely. Nicely done. And I'll second that, just because I can. So we have a motion to approve by Member Olson and Lando seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Unanimous. Thank you. And that takes us on to item 9.2.1, Appointment of Personnel Commission Member to a New Term.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to say congratulations and welcome to the new board members. I look forward to working with you throughout the next term. All right. So as you all know, Chico Unified School District operates as a merit district, and as required by Ed Code Section 4525, the Board of Education must approve all members appointed to the Personnel Commission. Each year, a new commissioner is appointed, serving a three-year term. The Personnel Commission consists of three members, one appointed by the district, one appointed by the CSCA Association, and a neutral third member that is jointly selected by the district and the union. Our current CSCA-appointed commissioner, Bev Beverly Patrick, who has done an absolutely wonderful job, will be retiring effective January 1st. CSCA Chapter 110 has conducted their selection process and has identified a candidate to succeed Ms. Patrick, and is there a recommendation that Ms. Susan Cox be appointed as the CSCA representative on the Personnel Commission? Ms. Cox has served as a valued employee for the district for 25 years and has been retired for one. Her extensive experience within the district and her commitment to its mission makes her an excellent candidate for the position, and the Board of Education is respectfully requested to approve the appointment of Ms. Susan Cox to the Personnel Commission as recommended by the local chapter.
Mr. President? Yes. For those of us that have known Susie for the many years that she has contributed an amazing amount of care and influence for classified employees and the district as a whole, as a bus driver, I'm happy to support this. I have a question. Is Ms. Patrick's retirement going to leave a partial... How long will Susie be serving?
So Susie will serve until the rest of Bev's, Bev Beverly's term, and then she will be reappointed at that time.
So we just did Bev, so she has another two years?
We did Bev's, yes. So she'll have two years, and then she'll be reappointed. We did Gloria Bevers this year.
Whenever you're ready, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Allen regarding this? Do we have any public comment? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the Chico Chapter 110's recommendation to have Susie Cox as their representative on the Personnel Commission with a glad heart, other than that she's not driving bus for us anymore, which is sad, but I know she'll do a good job for the classified employees and the commission as a whole. Thank you.
I'll second.
Excellent. We have a motion by Member Robiton and a second by Member Conkin. Does that whole speech have to be part of the motion?
Excuse me?
Sorry.
Does my speech have to be part of the motion? You can do whatever you want.
Sorry.
I can't say enough about Susie Cox and the contribution she has made to happy kids getting on and off the buses of Chico Unified.
Awesome. Wonderful. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? There are none? Unanimous. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Well, that puts us on to item 9.2.2, I believe, which is regarding a variable term waiver request for a PPS credential.
Thank you, President Lando. So pursuant to state mandate, the governing board must approve a variable term waiver for any position for employees who do not hold an appropriate, currently don't hold an appropriately assigned credential. We are fortunate with this waiver application to recommend approval, knowing that Ms. Hernandez is currently completing her 45 practicum hours with us. Is one semester waiver. Sometimes we bring two semester waivers to you, and we're excited to present this recommendation.
So this is, again, just to be sure, this is a case where the, it's a current employee who is... No?
No, she's completing her 45 practicum hours with us at the school site, so that's encouraging.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. Any other questions of clarification? Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the waiver.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. Motion by Member Hayes and a second by Member Robinson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we are on to Section 10. Are there any new items from the floor that were not brought up previously? I don't see any, which I believe puts us at Section 11, which is Board Member Request to Agendize Items. The only thing on here is mine. Mind if I just talk about? I was hoping that we could set aside some time at a board workshop or a closed meeting, because often the evaluation process for our superintendents is kind of hurried and rushed. I'd like to just take an hour out of our time at some point to just dedicate an hour or so of time to make sure we know exactly what we're going to do in terms of evaluation as we will be switching superintendent soon. So I'd like to just have a discussion with the whole board about what that process might look like and when we could do it.
Mr. President, I'm going to second your request so that we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Discuss a little.
I appreciate your wanted to move forward. We've, you know, we've struggled, even in the 15 years I've been on the board. This is, this is something that requires a lot of collaboration with not only the board members, but the person, position being evaluated. I would like to postpone, with your permission, again, this until our new superintendent is on board July 1. I think that it's vital that we discuss that person's desires for looking at evaluation processes that the board supports and understands, and get a schedule in place, because it's all new. He's not even, you know, with us until July 1. So with your permission, I'd like to table your motion until our August meeting.
I mean, if you want to make a motion to table, you certainly can. In response, though, I'd like to say that I know that part of our negotiation with the incoming superintendent is that he does have some number of days when we could basically borrow him. And I would really like to have an evaluation system in place as soon as he gets here. So perhaps we could schedule with him one of those, one of those days when he is going to be with us to dedicate to just this discussion.
I would feel that we have other priorities with our new superintendent to be covering if we're going to borrow him during the period of time between January 1 and July 1. So I'm kind of not in favor of that. I really want to wait for him to get, you know, on board with us, and then deal with the board on what the evaluation process and the schedule for that will look like.
Where are the rest yet?
Can you give us a little more information on what you had in mind with the evaluation process?
Yes. Well, I'm thinking back on how our last year's superintendent evaluation went, which was very scattered, and we kept kind of kicking the can down the road. I would like to have a very, basically a rubric for what we expect out of the superintendent and how we're going to know if that person is achieving their goals, possibly even to the point of having a brief section in the agenda where we talk about, you know, progress on those. And I just, it's going to take time to hammer out exactly what that looks like. So I don't know exactly what it's going to look like. This request is simply to have, set aside some time for a longer discussion about it.
I mean, I don't see why we have to have him present for that, to begin that process. I'm just trying to kind of wrap my head around, you know, what that process is going to look like. So, yeah, I'm open to put it on the agenda.
I'm going to jump in here, and hopefully it was the evaluation that was scattered, not the superintendent, but...
Very much so. Thank you.
I do think it's critical that whoever you're evaluating is involved in the process, whether that's on days that he has been granted to be here, or whether you wait either way. But it is a leadership team, and everybody on that leadership team needs to know and have conversation about what those expectations are, and how you're going to do mid-year checkpoints, and then what that final evaluation document looks like. So I happen to know, because Mr. Blake did see this item on our agenda, and, you know, he very much looks forward to having those conversations, and he has some samples, both of ones that have been used in his district and others that he's aware of that do many of those things. So regardless of when you hold it, I just want to say I think it's critical that it is the six of you that are having those discussions.
I guess I see this as a process, like you said, and if, my concern is if the process does... doesn't start till August, then I feel like that's just a little bit too late, and if we could start the process earlier, just to have, I guess, our ducks in a row, and so that when he does come in, at least some or most of the process has been completed, and we don't feel rushed in August to try to hammer it out.
I agree, as far as that goes, like, if we wait until August, there's so much that goes on in August, the beginning of the school year, at least I haven't been in this position in August, but I do know what it's like getting schools up and going in August, and everything is just so fast. So if you're going to do it, if we're, if we have an intention, or the board feels like it, there would be, it would be good to start it sooner than we, you know, we only have two meetings in February, April, and May. I realize that this, I assume that this, would this be a workshop sort of thing, where we would talk about it there, or would it be a regular board meeting that you're thinking?
I was thinking either add it as part of a workshop, or else just dedicate some closed-session time to it, if we could legally do that.
So the evaluation process itself can be enclosed, the process part, what you're going to do, how you're going to do it, would need to be an open?
Okay. Then, yeah, I envision just dedicating part of a workshop session to that discussion.
And I am more than happy to work with Greg and see which ones work for him and find a time to make that happen.
And to your point, Ms. Robinson, about having other important things to do with him, I absolutely hear that. I'm just thinking back to one of my first employment experiences as a teacher, where I was offered a job, and my first question was, how will I know if I'm doing a good job at this job? And the superintendent of that district kind of looked at me like, oh, that's a great question. And it was, it was a moment, right, of like, how will I even know where to start doing the things you're asking me to do if I don't know exactly what an excellent job looks like? So I think it is imperative that we have that in place before July one, honestly. From a procedural standpoint, did you want to put a motion to table this?
I did.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there a second for that motion? I am not seeing a second for that one. So are there any other, any other discussion on this one?
Well, I appreciate Ms. Staley being willing to contact Greg and see if there are any dates that would work, and if we could get feedback in January, I think that would be
In that case, are we ready to vote on the motion, with the understanding that if the motion passes, we will just put a more robust discussion of this on a future agenda, set some time with Greg at that point? All right, are we ready to vote on that? Is that fair? Okay. All those in, well, mind if we do a roll-call vote? All right. Mind if we start over here?
Conkin, aye.
Olson, aye.
Lando, aye.
Hayes, aye.
Robinson, no.
All right, four to one, thank you very much. And staff, do you feel like you have, understand we're asking for, have enough guidance? Awesome, thank you so much, perfect. I believe that is all we have, so I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
We got it.
We got it, thank you very much. So I suppose technically we should vote on the motion to adjourn, but all those in favor are adjourning. Give me an aye. Aye, we're done.